And we're good.
Okay, now we're going to need to order. Um, let's start with the pledge of leaders. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in the nation, and to the physical liberty and justice for all. Okay, thanks everyone. Um, I am going to ask Mr. Scott to read it over.
I got here just a little late off time, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Ms. Albright?
Here.
Ms. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Here.
Mrs. Leoni?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Scott, here. Mr. Strobel?
Here.
And Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
All presidents.
Okay, um, so we have time for a superintendent's report. Dr. Cooper?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, my report this evening, again, starts out with a report on our COVID cases in the district. Um, the confirmed positive cases within our district continue to decline as they are throughout the county and in Commonwealth, and obviously along with the number of record with a corinthian. And as, as we continue to do now this road and, and share this with the board and, and updates and past superintendent reports, on our committee, the whole agenda will include a recommendation by administration for a plan of return for our secondary students as we come off of the spring break. What we're looking at initially, I'm trying to share with the board this evening, and a quick snapshot is to bring our A B groups, uh, high blended students together to return together for four days a week with a remote course, we're learning Friday from the beginning of April, and then target for a full five days a week when returning, as recommended return from the beginning of May. While we have those students coming back, we would like to survey our digital and virtual learners to see what the interest is of those students coming to join the A B folks. Uh, their, their A B peers in the beginning of May, and that allows us to kind of slow walk this process of getting our students back in person on a more consistent basis while making sure that we're able to facilitate the, uh, record of social distancing where feasible, as well as, as well as the other mitigation strategy. So, I will talk a little bit more about that when we have the recommendation committee of hold. Also, obviously, all this is predicated on the continued decrease in number of cases that we see and our continuing trend, if we continue that trend, and then if we continue to decline, uh, as well as the increase in vaccine availability for our staff. Additionally, uh, for the follow-up, I want to share this evening is, um, I'll be releasing a short four to five minute video to our laser learning community as sort of a spring address, a short recap of this past year's navigation of the pandemic. Again, the anticipated release will be sometime next week, uh, beginning of mid next week to share with our community. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cooper. Um, we have a, as always, the procedures for public participation. Um, today is a voting meeting, so there will be a, a point for public comments following what I'm saying right now, at the beginning of the meeting on any agenda items, and a, um, at the end of the meeting on any items. Um, comments effective three minutes, as close as you can, and, uh, signature in your address at the beginning of your comments. So, having said that, um, do we have any presentations by the public on agenda items? Um, is he, is he on?
Yeah, yes, he's on.
Can you give us a test, sir? Can you give us a testing?
Check one two.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I'm, I'm here to comment about going back, uh, full-time.
Do your name first, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Shane Cockle, eight thirty, got your kind of right. My, my concern is that when we made this decision, you guys made this decision of going, you know, part-time, have, almost half the board wanted everyone to be virtual. Uh, the majority wanted, you know, the fifty-fifty. At the time, the cases were still lower than they are now. I think we're jumping the gun, and I think it should be brought out to the community like it was last time, of a survey of, you know, how you like it, if you want your kid to go back full-time. Uh, that sort, was there a survey sent out to the public to get input?
Not, not yet. I'm writing down what you're saying, and when we have this discussion, we'll, we'll talk about it.
That would be helpful. Um, we've gone this far, and to put everyone back in, in school, because we're not going to be able to social distance with, with twice as many kids. It's just, it's just not going to happen. Um, but if you guys decide to go back full-time, then it would be nice to start lifting the other restrictions of sports, of, you know, you, if there's going to be a prom, how that's going to work, uh, graduation, because it seems if we're going to go back kind of to normal, then it, everything should be, should go back. Either put it off a little bit longer to see, make sure the cases are still going down. I, is it a financial reason why we're doing this? Yeah.
I'll answer, I'll, 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 I'll try to, try, I'll try to address what you're saying.
But I, but there are answers to things that you've said, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, okay, so, I can understand if it's a financial situation, but it just seems there's still lots of cases, uh, even though it's on a down line. Uh, it just doesn't seem as if you've got this close to the end of the year to bring everyone back before enough time has set in. But we were in this predicament in the beginning of the year, so you don't know until, until you try. But if you guys decide to, okay, we're going back full-time, then there should be full-time everything. There shouldn't really be, I can understand a limit on sporting events, but all that stuff should be reconsidered. Prom, there shouldn't be any problem with prom. Graduation, there shouldn't be any problem with graduation. I mean, shields really shouldn't be, uh, uh, an issue. But that, that's all, I, I wanted to come tonight and see here why they use of going back full-time.
That's fair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cockle.
Thanks for reminding me about my shield, Mr. Cockle.
Do we have any other presentations or, um, on agenda items at this moment? We, we are going to have a more fulsome conversation about, and about lots of things having to do with, with, uh, COVID and our response, and I, I, we can try to talk about some of those things that he's addressing. Um, do we have any other comments at this time? No, seeing none. Um, moving on to announcements. I have an announcement of an agenda edit, and we are having an executive session after this meeting to discuss potential litigation. That is correct. So, um, and then I, um, we have, um, four good news, and it's been good news, and I'm going to let, um, Mr., um, I'm going to let Mr. Scott share it.
Hold on a second, I wasn't prepared for this.
Sorry, that was loud.
No, no, it's all good, it's all good. So, so, I wasn't doing this for self-serving reasons, but, uh, I'm, I'm pretty proud of my daughter, and we had, uh, four participants, to the best of my knowledge, that was involved with, uh, Penn State Thon over the weekend. They raised, uh, ten million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand and seventy-eight dollars and some change. They did this completely virtual. Um, I'm pretty proud that my daughter was the director. She was responsible for pretty much everything you saw on the screen. Um, and obviously she worked with a great team and everything else. She's been involved for four years, serving with the entertainment committee. As a freshman, she was DJ, she was in charge of DJs. Anyway, this concludes her Penn State and, uh, time. I, again, I wasn't quite prepared for this, but I, I can't even begin to tell you as a father how proud I was to watch her introduce the event, to talk at the very end of the event, right before they had the money. It's a pretty special event they put together. We were hoping we'd be up there. But that would be going on. So, we have Diego Santos, another, actually exceptionally good friend of Emily's, just happened to be, so one of the dancers this year, and was a photographer last year, and has been involved at Thon all four years. He's another graduate of Daniel Boone same year. Uh, Jacob Santos, which is brother, served on the entertainment committee, and this was his freshman year. Uh, and then there's Olivia, and I apologize if I'm saying this wrong, Bee Forranny, a sophomore that served on the operations committee this year, um, and the rules and regulation committee last year. So, it, those are four really special students. I, I do have a little thing for Emily, but, um, it was a pretty great event, and Preston, and I knew Rob, and, and he went from Penn State. It was, it was pretty cool. And they did this completely virtual this year without really any of the normal stuff, and they came pretty close to hitting the record. So, I'll stop talking.
No, it's okay. Um, and since, um, uh, Bucky is, uh, not interested in gushing about his daughter and Diego, at least those two students I know personally, um, you, um, they were very, very involved here. They're, they got, they cut their teeth, uh, doing event planning here with Re-Live for Life for four years. They ran, uh, Boons Got Talent. It was their idea. They ran it completely while they were here. Um, and, um, Penn State was lucky to have them. We were lucky to have them. They're great kids.
Yeah.
Preston even remembers that, so that's a good thing.
Preston does remember things.
I will, you know, not to, not to embarrass Buck and, and I've had many of your children come through, but Emily was my first year here, and she, uh, you meet a, sometimes you meet a student, and they make you, they're like adults, they make you feel, and she was, she was that kind of kid.
Yep.
When I first came. And my, my son also, also goes to Penn State, and is a part of Thon, as many kids are. Um, and they raised ten, like, a ten-six issue during the pandemic. Really, really phenomenal effort by that group, so congratulations to Buck and, and to all the, uh, kids who've done that.
Okay, moving on to number three. Um, got consent items, uh, three, A, one, three, nine. Can I get a motion for all that stuff? Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion. Or is it a motion?
Ms., Ms. Bell.
I said it.
Yeah, Ms. Bell.
Who said it?
Ms. Bell.
Bell, bell.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion, any discussion of anything under, under the consent items? Okay, hearing none. Um, can I get a vote?
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to, um, yeah, personnel consent, four. Can I get a motion for, for A, one through three?
I mean...
With the exception of, yeah, with the exception of, um, uh, assistant track coach for the middle school, Michelle Lodge. Everybody else?
I also need to, can we vote separately on extracurricular two, one?
Oh.
Two, one.
Yes, yes. Let me start over.
Sorry.
No, it's, no, it's totally fine. Um, uh, okay, so let's just do one and two. So, so we're going to go, um, for A, one and two inclusive. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I'm trying.
And, um, any, any, uh, comments, questions, concerns about, um, anything under one and two? That's up to Heidi Yesevich. Um, hearing none, can I get a vote?
Sure, for, for A, one through two, uh, Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes. So, I am sorry that this one's going to take longer, maybe it should just. Um, so, um, can I get a vote for, uh, can I get a motion for, for A, three, one? Craig said we should put up for the high school. Mr. Strobel, can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Mrs. Albright, um, any comments, questions, concerns? High school assistant principal. Um, can I get a vote?
Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes. And let me just say, um, Mr. Sogen's here. Okay, stand up?
Yeah.
Congratulations, sir. You, you want to come on up? Um, um, we are, um, gaining you at some point, um, when, when East Lebanon High School lets you go, is that correct?
Eastern Lebanon County High School.
Eastern Lebanon County.
So, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I'm really looking forward to joining the Daniel Boone, Daniel Boone community, um, as soon as Oklahoma High School lets me go. I'm currently an assistant principal there, so it'll probably be sometime in April, but I'm really looking forward to it, and I just want to say thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming out.
I'm a Penn Stater as well, so that's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Sogen comes to us with, uh, four years of, uh, high school administrative experience. Happy to have him as part of our team here, administrative team in the district.
That's great. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Um, so, um, can I get a motion for, for A, three, one? Uh, Mr. Strobel?
We did it, we did it.
Two!
Two, one.
Two, one. Okay, let's try again. Motion for, for A, three, two, one.
We're not going to do three, two, one and two?
No, no, but we'll, we'll explain in a moment.
Got you. I'll make that motion.
Okay, and then, and, and Mr. Miller seconds that, and, um, it's, um, part of bylaws. Um, I believe, Ms. Bell, you're intending to abstain?
Yes.
And, um, but you just got to tell us why. It's part of bylaws.
Mr. Hunt is my brother.
Fair enough. So, um, if we have any questions, comments, concerns before we vote? And, um, if we can get a vote, Mr. Mr. Scott?
Sure. Uh, Mrs. Bell?
I'm staying.
Oh, that's great.
She still has to say it, it's fine.
I, I, sure, I just, I, it's not, it's too bad. All right, are you doing, all right. Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes. Okay, um, so moving on to four, A, three, two, two, accepting Michelle Lodge for middle school assistant track. Can I get a motion for that?
Okay.
Mrs. Albright, can I get a second?
I'll make that, or the, the, the.
Any, um, comments, concerns about anybody else on the, on this, on the, um, sports appointment?
Just concerned about some of the empty socks.
Yeah, still empty here.
Assistant baseball, H P N R.
Yeah, I see the highlights, yeah. Baseball, and when is baseball supposed to start?
I think March the sixth.
I believe we did not have...
Steve, I can give you some color on some of that. Um, they, she, I think, actually does have a candidate in the works for the assistant baseball coach. Um, there's another blank there for softball. There isn't enough for middle softball for a JV team, so they're pushing that coach, uh, to leave with the varsity. Um, the middle, there is a middle school baseball position that still needs to be filled down there. Also, they haven't had a middle school softball team down there for quite a few years, um, so that's why that one appears blank, but it's not a necessary position.
Okay.
Good question.
Okay, so she's got somebody that she's looking at?
Yeah, and also, we clearly have a candidate already that's selected. It's just a matter of moving the paperwork through the bureaucracy. We also have a volunteer coach who's been with the program before, who's going to help out with us, uh, coming through.
You're aware that you're the bureaucracy, right?
Thank you.
Um, all right, so can we, um, get a vote on all of that that I just said?
Yes.
With no other questions, I think.
Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes. Okay, and then, um, the last one, for personnel, um, is five, A, three, two, two, um, um, just Michelle Lodge for assistant track coach from middle school. Um, can I get a motion for that? Mr. Strobel, can I get a second?
A second.
Is this four, A, or four?
Ms. Leoni?
It is four, not vote.
Did, did I say four? Did I say five? It's four, A, three, two, two, just the name of Michelle Lodge. Um, any discussion before we vote? Any comments, concerns, questions? Okay, I hear you're none. We're going to, um, go to Mr. Scott.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
No.
No? Okay. Sorry. Uh, Mrs. Albright?
Going to abstain on the grounds that I don't have enough information with an education.
Okay, thank you. And, so, seven, seven, one, one?
Seven yeses, one no, one abstained.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for being patient with that. That's, that was more steps than we usually have. Um, so, um, can I get a motion for, moving on to finance, added consent, five, A, one through five?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Strobel, ever, ever dependent. I get a second?
Second.
Ms. Bell, um, any discussion on any of these? Most of them, uh, actually, all of them came directly out of facilities or technology. Any, anybody want any questions answered before we vote on them? Okay, um, can I get a vote?
Sure. Mrs. Albright? Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
I guess.
Um, personnel added consent. Is that right? Yeah. Six, A, uh, one through two. Uh, uh, motion for any of that?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Scott, can I get a second? Ms. Albright, any, uh, comments, questions? If I hear none, um, can we get a vote?
Sure. Uh, Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes. And, um, seeing it's two of the positions, um, that were under number six were for the, um, Unified Track, um, we had a presentation from the Unified Track, um, last meeting. Um, very impressive for kids, um, it's, it's, from what I heard, um, they have been, you know, working overtime to keep it going and keep it growing even, even under COVID. So, um, you know, uh, it's just, um, I'm looking forward to seeing where we go with, with, with this Unified Track. All right, um, old business, um, second, A, one and two, um, community members, can I get a motion? Mr. Strobel, can I get a second? Ms. Leoni, any, um, comments, questions, concerns about minutes? Hearing none. Mr. Mr. Scott?
Uh, Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes. Okay, um, moving on to new business, um, motion before discussion? Yes. Um, um, eight, A, one, um, discussion of, um, the recommendation to add a fourth full, classical day kindergarten. I'm waiting for that, and we'll, we'll have our discussion after we, oh, bring it up. Ms. Albright, do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mr. Miller, um, Dr. Cooper, I know we've had these conversations within curriculum instruction, when we had that conversation at the end of last year, um, we had presentations from the, um, from Mrs. Hefter at the, at the, at the, um, the primary center, and the, some of the teachers that teaches classes. Um, I don't know if you want to, um, talk a little bit about the need?
Yeah, we, we originally, when, uh, we embarked on this journey, and, uh, like, came on as superintendent of schools two years ago, uh, we were curving two, uh, full-day kindergarten classes at the primary center, and, uh, we were able to, through realignment of human resources, add a third day kindergarten full-day K, uh, commencing with the start of this, uh, 2021 school year. And, um, as we continue to, um, navigate, uh, and take a look at what our needs of, or of our students in that age group, um, there is, uh, obviously a continued growing need to serve, uh, those, uh, average students in that population. So, uh, we will once again be able to reallocate some of our human resources in the district to be able to add a fourth, um, class of full-day K at the primary center, uh, if the board, uh, would so choose to, um, follow the recommendation, uh, so that we can get more kids in a full-day program. Currently, uh, with the addition of the third one, we have forty-five. This would help us grow to sixty students, um, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
And my understanding, last year, when we went with, when we had three, I know, I know every group of kids that come in every year is different, but, um, when we did evaluations, we had kids that we had determined definitely needed to be in those classrooms, and then kids that would really benefit for it by being, because they were kind of on the cusp. Um, we... We had more students than we had spots.
Correct.
And this would add another fifteen spots.
Correct. This would allow for us to serve more of those students that were right there on that, that bubble, so to speak.
Comments, questions, concerns?
I think it's a great idea.
Me too.
And we have a full day kindergarten program, and I think all five girls are interested in it.
Absolutely acceptable.
Is this an additional teacher or do we already have that resource?
We already have the resources. We would just reposition, we have resources. Every year when we have returns, presentations, we take a look at how we serve our students across the district. If we can reallocate them to better serve K to twelve, K to twelve system. That's what we do and we're going to do.
I agree, but I think every, every five girls should have to do it.
Yeah.
It's a good opportunity.
Any, anybody else want to jump in before we vote to go with the recommendation or not? But, Mr. Scott?
Okay, Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes. Okay, so I know that the next item is adjournment. However, I think we need to maybe open the floor a little bit to have some conversations about going, going back to school. There are some things that I wanted to say about, for myself. I was one of the people who wanted to go virtual at the beginning of the school year. And I, the way we got to the point where we were doing the cohorts the way we were at the middle, middle school and high school and the students, the, the way they were positioned at the elementary schools and with as many kids we had that were staying home for all virtual. I found myself feeling more and more comfortable with having kids at least in school because I, I was always frustrated because I felt like kids were safer if they weren't in the building. But I also knew that that interaction, whatever, even though it's not a hundred percent the interaction that we would have had pre-COVID, you know, I knew that that social interaction was really important, especially at the young ages. And so I was always having that push-pull. But I found myself eating my words a little bit because I thought it was going to be a disaster, and it was not. And I thought that we, we had a couple months along the road and, but we, I thought that having kids in school has been working well. I, when Mr., when Dr. Cooper brought it up to us that we were considering having kids come back, at least the A V cohort, all coming back, the fact that he, he's, he's trying to plan for something that's over and on the way. And we're leaving ourselves the opportunity that if things get worse or things stay where they are, maybe we won't do that. But the all, all signs are that things are getting better. So we're, you know, we're trying to plan for something that's over and on the, in the future. Trying to, you know, read the tea leaves and see what the situation's going to be then. And I do think that there's ways to do it safely, but, you know, we, we have to see if the COVID numbers in the community are going, continuing to go down, if the number of people at the highest, at the sixteen and above age range are continuing to get immunized. My understanding is we are having, we are having a full graduation, for sure. We might be having a prom, we are hoping to have a prom. Mr. Spores is currently talking to student leadership. When he said, there's no reason why it can't have a prom, just like we used to, except the thing is that we can't get, we can't get a venue to hold, to host five hundred kids anywhere. So we're trying to think of ways to do it here. But we're not there yet. But that is, that is the plan, that is the hope. And I agree with you that, you know, if we're coming back, we should be able to do everything. We should be able to have musical, we should be able to have chorus, we should be able to have jazz band, we should be able to have all sports. Anything where you're singing has extra special problems. You know, you know, even with, you can't do it in a mask, you know, so, so, you know, you know, and I also have, I have a kid who cares about the musical, cares about chorus, cares about jazz band, cares about marching band, and that's kind of it. So she's had kind of a rough year. And so I would like us to continue to aggressively, but we're going to have to, every club, we have to evaluate each one. Like, well, what do you do when you get together? How many kids are we talking? Do we have a space big enough for you? We have to make those decisions one by one with clubs and with musical and arts extracurriculars in a way that we don't, we have this, we have this framework to make those decisions with the P I double A assisting us with sports where we don't have that same framework for every single one of our, our clubs. And so we still have to continue to make those decisions piece by piece. But I think we, I think we can continue to look at them piece by piece. So that's my response to what Mr. Cockle had to say. I don't know if anybody else wants to?
I think there's two things that we didn't have to do. One, we don't know what we don't know.
Right.
Back then, when we first voted on this thing, what we didn't know, we were a dope. Nobody knew, nobody knew what this disease was going on. So much misinformation happening at the same time. And we made a decision that actually turned out, the admin's recommendation turned out to be brilliant. It worked very well so far. I know there are students out there that are suffering, being, I know there are not as well as part of the norm. We get that, but we made the decision as a group to go back at one time. And kindergarten group, we closed very few times. So this model absolutely was worth it for us. And that's back then. Going back all at one time would be great, but really think about it, this crawl, walk, run thing, we're still in that. We don't know everything, we know a heck of a lot more than we did before. So coming back, I think is, again, an educated decision because we have a lot of information that we didn't have a year and a half ago. There's others, there's other states that have schools that are at one time. They're not having the same, they're not having variations. I think the approach to go back, bring the A V back in to measure steps, crawl, and you go to a walk, and then you go to a run. And it gives the kids an opportunity to get back because they all want to get back. I have a senior this year who would love to come back for the last month or two.
Yeah, I too.
But if not, you know what? He understands it may not happen. This is a situation nobody wants to go through. But I think we have just so much more information to go with. So many work samples, other states, other schools, different areas that we didn't have at the beginning of this. So I think, I think it's an educated decision to take this back, that's my opinion of it.
The other thing that I felt to mention in my report is all of the learning options that we currently have available to our student families are still a whole lot of true. So parents who still feel comfortable making the decision with, within their family structure that they want to keep their students in a digital streaming platform, they can do so. Or they want to keep them in the virtual academy platform, they can do so. But just to kind of give some data on where enrollment, and this was the enrollment figures and, you know, medals a month on a community in whole. Currently, we have four hundred and seventy-one learners in a middle school that are on the A V. So half that were on an A scale, half were on a B, so split that in half, give or take, you know, twenty, twenty-five kids. We're talking about two hundred and thirty-five students in the building currently at one time. Where if you blend them for an A V, four days a week, that'd be five. You're four seventy-one in a building that has a capacity nearly a thousand students. So it's not even a fifty percent capacity based on these numbers. A high school currently has four hundred and seventy-five capacity. The high school is approximately, give or take, almost fifteen hundred students, so you're a third capacity there. Just to kind of give you a measurement compared to our elementary buildings currently, we have four hundred and thirty-six students that are in-person instruction, five days a week, they're a primary center, four hundred and fifty-one, they're in-person instruction, five days a week, they're intermediate center. So you can see the number of students that are participating and the in-person instruction are pretty comparable across all of our buildings. However, the capacity and sizes of our high school and middle school are larger now. Our, our elementary kids are covered where the, the ability to do that in the secondary level is minimized a little bit more because they're, just the nature of the schedule. But just wanted to throw some of those statistics out to you as far as our enrollment figures and how we continue to take a look at this, we get a little bit closer to the return after spring break.
I do have a question. Are we going to allow students to opt back into the A V before we move forward? I know a number have opt out, it's a situation that works, and I think would likely like to opt back in.
Students can make that choice now at any time if they want to come back into the A V from a digital platform. So they'll say they can dig it over the rest of the administration at the secondary buildings and they can get back into that.
Okay. Yeah, I think as long as you're going to watch the trend, as long as the trend continues in both cases and everything goes the way that we hope it does. So yeah, getting everyone back full time is ideal.
And all of this, we had to make, we had to pivot with all this stuff. I mean, you know, everybody, for a while, they were all thinking it was going to go good, then Thanksgiving hit.
Right.
You know, then Christmas hit. And they thought Tampa Bay was going to be a disaster area for the Super Bowl, it didn't happen. But there's a lot of unknowns still, but we still have the option. They're like, Dr. Cooper said, everybody can choose whatever they want, still is still available. And I think we still have the ability to pivot right back out from capital flow, but I think it's a great position.
I, I don't watch the football. Well, you can't agree with that.
And I think, I think the model that we, that we have developed as a district, as we, as students may choose to come in off the full-time digital training platform, as long as we're pointed, which we've been in, trying to keep as close to equitable as possible in those A V groups, it, you know, allows for us to pivot back to an A V model and also provide students, families with the choice to pull and go back to a full digital model as well. So I think the models that we've, the learning options we provided allowed for those pivots to happen seamlessly.
Yeah, and one thing I will say that I forgot to mention before, you know, if we do go back to a situation where all the A V students go back to school and all, every day, and then like we gradually, you know, through different like benchmarks, bring, bring back the kids that are virtual. You know, when you're doing that, you know, we are, we're bringing back kids that only, like maybe, maybe half of the high school is even eligible at this point to be vaccinated, and they won't be vaccinated because most of them are healthy and they're probably in route two, you know. And so while, when we, if we do bring kids back, it's going to be making social distancing the smaller for the students. So I don't see masks or shields going anywhere until the largest, larger proportion of our student body is vaccinated. I just don't see this going away without a vaccine, you know, even if we find that we might be more comfortable with a little bit less social distance and having more kids in a, in a room. I, I don't know, does anybody disagree with that?
I, I think there are some kids that really have to do that.
Yes.
And I think it's good for parents to be able to make that choice.
Yep.
Or, or for the child to make that choice if they want to go back.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that this is, this is, this is, this is the plan if for, for them, if they want to come back, we got to, we got to do this stuff. And I don't see, I don't see a way around that.
That's what they're doing right now.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not going to be a huge change for them, so I'm.
All right. I know, I know we're not voting on anything, I'm just, I want us to keep interrogating those. If, 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 if a principal or a, or a coach or an advisor or a student group comes with a plan to say this is, you know, how our group might be able to be safely, you know, I want to be able to give them that opportunity to not just say blanket, like, no, you know. We should be trying to, you know, investigate whether or not those things can occur, if we can find a way to do it safely that's more similar to what they're used to. There, I mean, some, some kids' clubs really do lend themselves well to Zoom even though they'd rather be in the same room together, but some don't. I don't know, does anybody else have anything that they wanted to talk to, to speak to any of that? You know, I know we haven't had a vote on any of that, but we've been talking like we know, we know it's coming. And so I just wanted to see where the board was feeling on that. So, okay. With all of that said, do we have anybody who would like to make a public comment?
Can I make a public comment?
From your seat?
Well, from the, what we just spoke about.
Yeah, that's fine.
Shane talked like thirty.
No, yeah, you, you used up your three minutes forever. No, no, you're fine.
Get the timer off. We got to shut them down.
I'm not opposed to going back from time.
No, I, I was trying to answer your question. I wasn't trying to say everything you said is ridiculous. I, I think, I think it's important to address those things.
Saying the same. And I was just, what I.
Do you want to know that we're just not making a knee jerk, like, let's everybody go?
Well, no.
Yeah.
It's just, what I don't want happening is some kids getting to, having to lose some of their things that they would like to do while other kids are going to be able to do the things that they want to do.
I know.
And it's, you know.
Some of it has reasons, like, those were just some examples that I knew.
Right. Someone who plays basketball, I go to all of the basketball games, there's twelve hours at the most in, in the stand. The kids were all six feet apart on the bench, and then timeout, and everyone gets into a huddle.
Yeah.
And then they go out and they play and everyone's underneath, there's literally ten kids under the basket. And it all worked out fine, but it never made sense to me, well, why are they sitting six feet apart? Because it makes it look like they're doing the right thing. It's actually not doing anything because they're spending two hours every day in practice. Two hours in.
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
So, yeah, graduation, like he says, go back, prom. Your lunch is where you're going to.
Yes, that's where, and other than the fact that I know, and, you know, I don't want to make this into a long, like, get and take, but I know Mr. Spores is here, you know, but my understanding is that I know that we are trying to find like alternate, you know, ways for kids to find a place that's not the, the lunchroom to sit, like when it's warmer, which hopefully it will be April something, you know, that we are going to make courtyard space available. There was talk of maybe allowing N H S kids to, to be outside, like somewhere else even.
Right.
And things like that. So we are trying, that, that is, the lunchroom, especially at the high school, is the big concern.
And all the kids made it.
Yes.
So they all ate with no masks this whole entire time. Middle school, you know, they, they got their lunch, they sat down, they unmasked, air it all game. So all that stuff, you would think would have been, you know, a huge outbreak, and it's not. And that's why I'm saying, I think if you choose to go back to one, well, you can pretty much, I can understand masks and shields, but at the same time, if you look at, especially at the lunchroom, they all survived. Well, why can't they, you know, have course? Why can't they have music? Why can't they have all this stuff? Because it's really no different than them screaming and yelling in the lunchroom with no masks eating. So that's, I don't want the school to say, well, look, we're doing the right thing, and these kids suffer.
Yeah, I get it.
While all the, while these kids get, you know, full room, have everything fair and everything normal, and do what's right for everyone.
And I, and I say this not intending to sound dismissive because it's not, and we take it under advisement.
Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Strobel, you had wanted to say something quick?
If you have a child in band, bands, one thing that doesn't have to be a lot of feel like a band, except.
I understand.
Child, football, fight, whatever. You can't open them all at one time, you know, you open it in pieces, somebody, someone's going to feel that way.
But that's why I said, you know, you know. But that's why I said, you know, you know, we, we do have to keep interrogating, you know, what's, what are the limitations, can we overcome them? You know, and not just say.
All the kids are getting together ready, but they're, they're at Apple Week Friday night.
I know, right?
Because they're all eating together anyway, so.
One of the things that we have to be cognizant of as well is the continued guidance following after P E.
It's changing.
DOHs, and it continues to morph and change and modify and adjust, and, and, you know, we're obligated to follow those and, and, you know, with the confines of whatever, you know, we decide to do, what, what plan we decide to follow there, um, we're still bound to, to follow those, the mitigation strategies. Remember, um, there was an ad destination document that was signed on myself.
Yes.
Uh, that indicates that we will continue to follow those mitigation strategies that were set forth by the DOHs to be to the greatest extent possible. So, you know, we're obligated to do that as a district.
And we do continue to, like, when they make change, either to relax, mostly at this point, to relax some of the, uh, requirements, or to just, uh, change them as they find that certain things are, um, certain things are of greater, um, of greater or lesser, um, risk than they, than they originally thought. You know, we're, we're constantly raw, as, raw early is essentially, like, constantly updating that. So we appreciate that. Um, so any other comments, uh, from the assembled? Yep.
Mary, like, uh, 13 year old circle.
Yep.
I think you're in a circle.
I can't.
I just, I thank you guys, I think you're doing a great job personally. Um, like, since we're moving towards the kids going back to school, my concern is because, I know my son, his education has dropped off drastically, and he is in the cohort that goes to school. He can have a choice. He was going back. And I know a lot of his friends, I, I hear these kids talking, and they're just checking out. They're literally checking out of the school year, and I don't want to see that happen.
Yeah.
So I understand some, you know, actual process, I mean, not everything's going to come together. These kids know that. They understand that there's probably not going to be a prom, and there's probably not going to be a seminar.
What, really, try, you're saying what it is, Mr. Sforz?
I'm, well, okay, I can say that's what they're thinking.
Yes, I know, I know that's what they're thinking.
They're thinking, it's all that way back, so if anything does come back, there's going to be that much happening. So, yeah, arguably, my thing, but.
Our two high school, our two high school, uh, board representatives, you know, when he talked, when Mr., uh, when Dr. Cooper mentioned it a couple weeks ago, I said, "Did you hear him? He said that a friend of mine..." And then, "Yeah, we'll believe him when we see it."
Right.
And I know that's, that's, so that means, you know, we as the adults have to try to deliver.
Yeah, and, and I just, I think they understand as well that it's got to be gradual. Nobody's expecting that, you know, next week they're all going to go back to school, so it's.
Yeah.
I, I think it'll be a very positive thing for them to see this going back thing from their way. If nothing.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Paparolo.
I, I think one of the, one of the things also remember is providing these experiences, in particular first years of prom and the graduation commencement ceremony, it may not look like, uh, the traditional, uh, events, ceremonies of the past. Uh, we're, we're going to work to try to find some way to have some type of a celebration in person. What that looks like, we, we, it's kind of hard to tell right now where we're at, but we'll continue to morph that, look, uh, what that may look like moving forward, knowing what our kids have gone through the past year.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. All right, um, any other comments from the public? Hearing none, sorry I dragged everything out, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a second? Okay, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone. That's what we're thinking about, that's what, Mr. Mr. Sforz, are you still here? Mr. Sforz? Hi.
Listen, so when you said you're tired or you're, you're down with the bar, go down, that was down. Play your gun. You were just thinking of playing, that's okay. And it was late, so, so. You know what I mean, like, just basically from the very. And Mr. Sforz, I mean, I'm. If you're on your, I told that, I know. Don't worry, no. It's not like you just break for a vacation. So, I, I, we live there for. I've got it, it was my best, you like it.
Uh, I had a hot dog core, and a cup of water.
Yes, so, so I said, well, so I said. So, so I. They said, "Well, you..." Oh, yeah, no, I mean. Yeah. So, so, so. Well, here's the thing. You know. Well, I said, I said. He sure. It has, it has. I go, he's something. Just never have. Yeah, I'm getting new mail, I'm getting new clients, I'm getting, I'm getting, it's a, it's a. I'm just trying to check the, check the, like, do, do you get any other drivers? It's a, it's a, I, I, next round. Sure, I know. It's, it's. Yes, our place is there. It's a nice place, it's a good place. Oh, yeah. Even waiting to say that. Especially this, 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 this loud music. I swear, I think it's not, like, they say, it's loud being, it's hot louder. Other than the grand law. They wanted to drive past, so I get the, I get the, I get the. Questions. It is, it is. I think. Allow that. She has a lot of, of age. So she's. First, first. That might be there. It's a problem. It's a problem. All right, I think. Hi, so I have all this stuff to go over when we sit down.
Sounds great. Steve, did you reconsider? I mean, you know.
He's thinking about it.
I think I, I get, if I get through the next turn, I think I, I get most of my kids through.
Yes. Your youngest is in fifth grade.
But of course, if I hear some of those names popping up, I just.
I know, right?
I may go for none. Thank you very much, I, for saying something.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know, I was, I was like, oh, ready, I got, I got ahead of. I told Emily that, uh, everyone said nice things, but that was good. So it was funny.
Just a reminder, after we have our executive session, anybody who's, um.
That was still on.